I've called me in order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, please be seated. Board members, if you prefer, you can take off your mask since we're social distancing up here. Welcome to the April 2021 regular school board meeting. Are there any visitors today, men that sign in? Okay, so we'll go to the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes for March 9th, 2021, which was an executive session. March 22nd, 2021, which is the regular board meeting. We also have the treasurer's report for March of 2021 and claims, Mr. Durrell.
Yes, Mr. President, consider gross wages for March of 12th, 2021 at $627,780.91. Gross wages for March 26th, 2021, $568,480.92. Claims prepay from 3/1 to 3/31, 2021, $867,223.13. For claims on regular vouchers from April 19th, 2021, $307,313.78. And claims for Forest Hills vouchers for April 20th, 2021, $2,048.80. For a grand total of $2,372,847.54, I can enter that into consideration for the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Durrell. We also have donations, there are three listed here. $250 from Matt for my dog for the junior high sports program. There's also $500 from the Maple Grove Christian Church for the student assistance fund. And $200 from Psy Iota Chi Sorority for the Forest Hills Special Education Program. We also have personnel resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves and terminations A through M. And appointments and transfers A through G. We have a motion on the consent agenda.
I will move approval.
I'll second.
Move and second, any questions or comments? Very none?
I do have something to add. I would just like to say something about our Director of Special Education, Jennifer Anderson, who is unfortunately leaving us. And I was just thinking about her tonight as I was getting ready for the evening's meeting. And for all that Mrs. Anderson has accomplished in her years, few years that she's been at RBB, you would have thought she was here for 20. She just really came in and turned around our special education department. She was so important in bringing our mental health team, informing our mental health team and providing leadership there. And the Tims Grant. And she's a colleague among all the principals and myself that we went to not only for special education, but just education matters in general. And so we wish Mrs. Anderson the best of luck and I know she'll do a good job where she's going.
We do wish her staying with us. I understand as well. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is the business manager's report, so Mr. Irwin.
You should have there in front of you the cash flows for this month. Starting there in the education fund, again, staying consistent with previous months. Education fund is staying right where we expect it to be. We still project to be about even on year-end balances, we're just below that point with current projection. And the numbers will update again as the year moves on. And we have more certainty in the state funding formula. Obviously, this legislative session is starting to come to a close here and we'll start to have a better idea of where those final numbers are going to lie with what tuition support will look like for the next budget couple of years here. And so we will update that once we have those types of information and continue to key in on that as we go along. In debt service, there's nothing really to know. There was no activity in debt service during the month of March. We had no expenditures or revenue that came in. And then in operations, again, staying kind of with that theme of staying steady as expected. Again, with current projections, we expect to be in the neighborhood of last year's ending balances. And we've kind of targeted that 1.2 to that 1.4 range of being a real comfortable spot for us in the operations fund and we expect to be in that range here at year end. We also do expect to get the two buses that we ordered here earlier in the year. They hopefully will arrive within the next couple of weeks. So I bumped up our claims numbers for this month of April because we will pay for those on arrival. Other than that, one thing, a quick note. We did post a letter about general property tax information on our website located under the board tab. We wanted to give some pertinent information to community members about the property taxes and RBB CSC. So I just wanted to make sure to make note of that while I was up here as well. With that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I just want to say I appreciate what you put on the webpage about the property taxes. It's very, I'm not sure who put that together, if it's Mr. Kerr, Dr. Sanders, but Matt. But it was very well written, very helpful, I think, for people to understand.
Yeah, definitely a collaborative effort and definitely want to put that information out to make sure that was available for the public.
I agree, thank you very much for doing that.
Anything further? Well, Mr. Irwin, to stay there, next thing is consideration to surplus some of the school buses.
Yeah, so we have a list of school buses that have been identified for surplus. They're no longer of service to the school corporation. And so we will be looking to get rid of those. We'll put them out to auction on a minimum bid requirement to see that we can get what we think we should out of them. We want to make room for the new two, couple new buses coming in. And as we redo the back lot there in transportation, just want to have less to keep out there in the lot during the summer. And so it's time to get rid of some of those old buses that we don't need and hopefully recoup a little bit of money to help push back into the operations fund to help with other expenditures in transportation. So with that, I ask for your approval.
I move approval for surplus of school buses.
My second.
Moved and seconded, any questions or comments? Timing looks pretty good, too, to try to get some open space in the lot. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item is the consideration to purchase two zero-turn mowers. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, dating back to the work session that we had had earlier in the year, we identified that we had started to put together that master capital replacement list. And we have identified a list of different things that we were hoping to take care of during this calendar year. Some of those being the zero-turn mowers to start to slowly turn over the fleet that we have, which is aging and up there in hours. And so we obviously take care of quite a few acres of land here. And so we identified two of them, they're 72 inches. We put out all the different bids and we're really happy with what came back. We've been purchasing two Cub Cadets, 72-inch mowers. Not only did we get bid assistance on that, but we got a great trade-in price on the two mowers that we'll trade in. And so we'll be able to get both mowers for a total price of $16,065.50. So we're pretty pleased with what that turned out. It turned out to be a little bit lower than what I kind of anticipated as we started to put together potential costs. And so we were very pleased with the way that turned out. Hopefully, within the next year, by next summer, we'll get the rest of the mowers so that our fleet will be turned over and we make sure that we're taking care of our property there. With that, I ask for your approval.
I will move approval.
I'll second.
Move and second, any questions?
A quick question, Mr. Irwin. I saw that you think we were doing the trade-in and I'm going to back you up to the previous item. Places where we get into the buses, do they take trade-ins too? Or do we just surplus those in a different way, the old buses?
Yeah, they'll take trade-ins on these ones we didn't trade in. We thought that we could get a little bit more for them than what we were going to get on the trade-in. So we thought we'd try it this route to see if maybe it would be a little bit more worth our time to try to take them to auction and get a little bit more for them.
Okay, so that'd be part of the RBB's auction that we do here.
Online auction, yeah.
Perfect, perfect, thank you.
I'm just excited that we was able last month to replace the tractor. This month, we replaced two zero-turns and our cash flows are still stable. So that's always, always good. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is consideration to approve a vendor for our E-Rate USAC 470 for internet services. And for that, we'll see Technical Director Rick Rowton, Technology Director. Well, he's very technical, too.
Evening, everybody. So our fiber optics are internet services that we use for the school for all technology, for the students, their Chromebooks, to get out to the Google, to get to the internet, to YouTube and everything that they use today for education, especially in the last six to 10 months for virtual learning for COVID. Our bandwidth is coming up for renewal. We've been with Smithville Telecommunications, excuse me, they used to be telecommunications, but it's Smithville Fiber. And they, again, have won the bid for our internet services. We followed the USAC rules and regulations for E-Rate. And we had four people bid and unfortunately, three of the others did not provide what we were looking for, which was fiber optic to the premise. So the one of the things that you'll see in the report is that it was requested that we do fiber optic premise and not a hybrid solution that was coax or something broadband then to a fiber optic network. We wanted to make sure we had the best optimal services to our students and our staff here. So Smithville won this bid. We're actually going to double our bandwidth from 500 megabits to 1 gigabit. So this is a great news for us and we go down by $24. So we're actually doing better, which is great. We also put in our bid requirements to allow us to escalate our change, or, sorry, to change our bandwidth requirements as we go through the three years of this term. So we can go all the way up to 10 gigabits, but we're probably not going to see that for a while. Plus, we do not have the equipment to accommodate a 10-gigabit connectivity. So we're moving slowly toward a higher bandwidth, better service. And we're also making improvements on our in-house solutions also. But this is due to expire in June and this will take over on this one with your approval tonight in June. So we'll just transition very smoothly. No one will see any difference on our services here. And hopefully, when school starts in the fall, we will have a nice smooth transition for the students to walk in and they'll be a little happier to see their YouTube videos coming a little bit smoother and faster. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Do you have a motion?
I will move approval.
My second.
Moved and seconded, any questions? Better for less, can't be that.
Sounds good to me.
That's what we like. Thank you.
Thank you.
My good.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All righty. Now we have consideration to approve the virtual school option for the 2122 school year. Dr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am recommending that RBB offer our students and parents a virtual school option for the 2021-2022 school year. We believe that in-person education instruction is still the best, but we also understand that we are still dealing with the pandemic. And so we want to give our parents and students an option for next school year. The virtual school will be offered to students in grades K through 12. This year, since we have a little more time to prepare. Last year, we were offering virtual school and we were building that, as I've used all last year, we were building that airplane as we were flying it. This year, we have a little bit more time. So we are going to ask our parents to complete an application. In the application, they will have to talk about the technology support in the home, the strength of their internet connectivity, whatever type of device are they using. Now, technology support issues in the home, even if they have issues, they would still be eligible for the virtual school. But that gives us information to know, do they need a hotspot? What can we do to help them to be successful? We also want to know, is there reasoning because of a related health issue in the home that would make it maybe an unhealthy situation for them to be at school? Once again, that would not keep them from, if there isn't a health issue, that's not going to keep them from being able to participate in the virtual school. Once again, it just helps us to understand the rationale for selecting the virtual school. And then we're going to ask the parents to write out a rationale. Why do they think this is the best option for their child? And once again, that's just really informing us as we move forward. And then finally, if possible, we would like to have the teacher, if the student participated in virtual school this year, we would like to have that teacher to write an evaluation of how well that student participated. Were they engaged? Were they showing up every day and actively completing the assignments? And then assign a commitment of engagement form that they are committing to making the virtual school option work. And we do all that because the bottom line is whether the student is in school or virtual, we all want that student to be successful. And we want to be able to help them to be successful. The delivery of instruction will be similar to this year. With our elementary level, we will have an RBB classroom teacher to deliver the instruction using Google Classroom like they did this year. Grades 6 through 12 will continue to use the Apex system, but they will be supported by an RBB classroom teacher. Students, whether they're in school or virtual, will be provided special education services. And then finally, students enrolled in the virtual school will not be eligible for extracurricular activities. This virtual school will be funded with our stimulus dollars, our CARES Act dollars.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move approval, sir.
I'll second.
Move and seconded, any questions or comments?
Thank you so much for the work on this, Jerry, and our IT people and the principals.
And one thing I left out is that I skipped over is students will still be required to, unless there's a health issue, will still be required to come to school for any state or local assessments.
Dr. Sanders, as far as funding, also, they, besides the stimulus money, we're still getting a per pupil?
Yes, we'll get, yes. I believe we're still, we're going to be getting 85% instead of, we got 100% this year, but I think next year it'll be at 85%.
Okay, so in the program that we're doing, will satisfy that in order to get that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now on to Ms. Lain's information, Dr. Sanders.
Yes, I'm very excited to recognize Stephanie Knoth from the Edgewood Intermediate School, teaches fourth grade, for receiving the IU Armstrong Teacher Educator Award. And this award was created by gift from Cook Group Companies to establish the fund, the Martha Leah and Bill Armstrong Fund in Teacher Education. The program is intended to increase involvement among teachers, Indiana University School of Education faculty and pre-service education students. One aspect of the program allows IU Bloomington to identify a small select group of schoolteachers each year from across the state of Indiana who will work with faculty and students in our undergraduate, in their undergraduate teacher education program. So we would like to congratulate Stephanie for being recognized by her colleagues and administrators for the outstanding and caring teacher that she is. Mrs. Knoth is clearly one of our all-stars, so.
That's wonderful recognition. Anything further in Ms. Lain?
No, just a construction update, I could give you that real quick, which is, we have several construction progress, the projects that are actively in progress. The Innovative Learning Center bid will, is actually, those bids are due on April 27th. So you'll notice out here that the new administration building is just getting started under construction. And if you move up to the junior high, the new multipurpose room and the Makerspace Labs, they're being actively used. I'm really pleased that they're maximizing that space. That is what we are promoting across the school corporation. And then we have our preschool connector project that is moving right along. It is a few weeks behind, one because of weather and the other is it's a challenge right now to get materials on time. And if you've ever, if you've gone to buy something that loads, you have experienced that. Contractors are experiencing the same thing. Oh, and the pool renovation here is in progress and the new locker rooms are going to look fantastic. And so we're really excited about these all very student-centered projects. And it's keeping us busy, but that's good.
Thank you, and we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right. All right, for my superintendent's report, I have a few different items to share with you. One is we've started a new team at RBB. It's called the RBB Welcome Team. And if you'll look on the back of my report, you'll see a map of Ellisville and some different subdivisions that some are that are currently in progress. It means their building is going on in those subdivisions. There's a set of subdivisions that are, they've been approved, but the building, the houses have not started. And then the list of subdivisions that are planned, but they haven't been approved yet. And the print is somewhat small, or not somewhat, very small. So let me go through there and try to, you can maybe write these down. But on the far left is, and looks like light red or pink, is Barbary Estates. And there's a little green section there, that's Barbary, but that's the first section of that. That green area has already been approved and they will be, I don't know if they started yet, but they should be starting the building soon. We've actually met with the developers and talked to them about what their plans were because Barbary Estates is directly across the street from EPS and EIS. And then over to the middle of the page and at the bottom, you'll see a yellow section and a green section. The yellow section is Greenbrier Knowles. And the larger green section below it is Greenbrier Meadows. And then up a little bit to the right of the center, at the top, is Overbrook Estates. And somebody very famous lives in Overbrook Estates, we won't mention who that is. And then Ruby Creek is below that. And that's, there's actually several houses being built right now there. And then below that is Ruby Creek 2, I believe it is. And they're clearing that area right now. And below that is Woods of the Meadowlands. And then to the, just below the, in the green, the Woods of the Meadowlands is Autumn Ridge and moving on down, I didn't mark that one, the green. Charleston Manor 1, that's right, thank you. And then the other one is Charleston Manor 2. And then over to the right is Centennial Park and Ellis Ridge. So if you look at all the lots that are available, RBB is in a unique opportunity. Every school corporation in the state of Indiana, they want to grow. But many school districts are maybe in a community where there isn't a lot of housing going on. RBB is not. We are in an area where there is a lot of housing that is coming to our area. And so we need, I think as a school corporation, we need to take advantage of that opportunity. So we've put together this RBB Welcome Team to connect with prospective RBB families in order to make strong first impressions, build positive relationships and to offer helpful information about Edgewood Schools. So as a family is thinking about moving to the area or maybe they purchased a house and they haven't actually moved in, or maybe they have moved in, we want to develop different strategies to make that connection with that family. Well, hopefully, they will come to RBB, but at least we want to establish a relationship with them and give them information about the schools so they can make an informed decision. We met on April 6th and we generated a list of innovative ideas. And we're going to meet again on April 29th and fine-tune some of those ideas and try to get something going sooner rather than later. Every house that I drive by, I feel like I need to stop by and say hello so that we can make that connection. So a lot of great people on that team and I'm excited about what we're going to be able to accomplish. And along the same lines is Envision Ellisville. And I wanted to, I shared this with the board already in a weekly review, but I wanted to share it at a public meeting to try to get, try to get the word out about a project that the Ellisville Chamber of Commerce is working on. And as I said, it's called Envision Ellisville. And the purpose of the project is to create a shared vision and plan for the future of our community that is strategic, actionable and sustainable. And the chamber received a $30,000 Community Impact Grant by the Community Foundation of Bloomington in Monroe County. And they also have received support from the Smithville Charitable Foundation. This goes right along with our Ready Schools Initiative. If you remember last school year, RBB went through a planning year with Ready Schools. And we sent out surveys to students, to parents, all of you. And we conducted interviews with various groups. And the whole idea was to inform us on what was important in our, from our stakeholders for RBB. And so that's basically what this project is about. The chamber through, with these grant dollars, will be able to hire a firm that will help us to develop this information and be able to, from that, make our plan based on what the community members, the citizens of Ellisville think are very important for our community. And so we're excited to be part of that. Jamie Miller, representing Ready Schools, is helping with this project and I am too. And I sat in on the interviews for the firm that will be chosen to lead all this work. And with the very first presentation, I thought, this is pretty exciting. This is, it'll be great to be part of the Ellisville area as we see our community to develop. And then lastly, I just thought I'd give you a legislative update. First on House Bill 1001, which is a state budget, it was announced that- First on House Bill 1001, which is a state budget, it was announced that the state revenue forecast for 2021 through 23 indicates an additional $2 billion in revenue available over the next two years that will be factored into the budget. ISBA and probably every public school corporation in the state of Indiana will be trying to convince the legislators that they need to increase, increase the funding for K-12 public education. Now, we also talked about the virtual school funding a few minutes ago, and we said about the 85% that, that was the previous rule that if you had a student who was a virtual school, that you received 85% of the tuition. And then because of COVID, they moved it to 100%. And part of this state budget bill, they're moving it back to 85%. And we adopted last month a resolution on House Bill 1005. And nearly 200 school boards across the state of Indiana, including RBB, serving 690,000 Hoosier students also adopted resolutions opposing this bill. But language from this bill was inserted into HB 1001, the state budget. So they moved this language into the, the state budget bill, and it really never got a hearing in the Senate. And then House Bill 1008, this is good news also. It provides $150 million to the Student Learning Recovery Grant Program to address student learning loss or gaps that were created as a result of COVID-19. I put the link, two links on here, going back to the Envision Ellisville. There is a link there for you to find more information. And also, these cards that you have before you and were on the table coming in for the public, these cards are available to Chamber Commerce and also in our office. And then I also put a link to the legislative updates if you want to follow along with, with those bills. That's my report for tonight.
Any questions for Dr. Linder? Yeah, I was looking at the map, and these are the subdivisions in the town of Ellisville. There's also developments outside the town as well that's not reflected on this, so we are in a growing area right now. Okay. See, RBBEA comments, I do not believe they have represented here.
Mr. Yoles is not here tonight.
So we'll move on to Board Member Commons, and I'll start right with Mr. DeVos.
I'd just like to echo congratulations to Stephanie Knox. She's terrific and well-deserved, and it'd be great for her kids and also any of the young teachers that get to learn from her. Relevant to what Dr. Sanders was saying about the legislation, Steve Hennifeld had a blog post today, and I'm going to read just a couple pieces of it. His first paragraph was, "Indiana legislators, legislators will have to work hard to find excuses to underfund K schools, K-12 schools now that state revenue forecast shows they have a lot more money to spend." And his last paragraph is, "It's the same old song from Indiana's Republican politicians. When times are bad, we can't spend money on schools because we don't have it. When times are good, we can't spend money because good times don't last. You could almost think that education isn't a priority." I, I appreciate Mr. Hennifeld's, his work over the years. And he, he captures a lot of what I've been thinking in his blog post for today. So I, I encourage everybody to contact your legislator and let him know what you think about what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. Gerlach?
Thank you, sir. Just one quick compliment to our IT section. Rick, are you out there? Thank you very much for taking care of my computer the other day. It was very quick and very painless, so I appreciated that. So thank you very much.
Mr. Jacobs?
I wanted to say thank you for the donations again to the organizations that continually help fund our corporation, different things in our corporation. It means a lot to us. And I also want to say best wishes to Dr. Anderson. We're going to miss you very much at the corporation. I want to congratulate Stephanie Knox as well. She was both of my children's teacher, and she's just an amazing asset to us. She's wonderful, so. And then lastly, I just want to thank Matt and Dr. Sanders for, you know, giving that explanation of the taxes to our community. I know that there's a lot of questions. I've, you know, gotten a lot of feedback, and so I think this is going to really help everyone understand exactly how it is looked at. And it was in, in terms that was very easy for me to understand. So I appreciate the time and effort you guys put into that. That's all, thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
Ditto, ditto, what everyone said there. Good thing, congrats to Ms. Anderson and her new chapter in her life, and hopefully that goes well. I do encourage Ms. Cox from the HC to maybe put a link to the, the webpage for RBB with the tax information. That'd be very helpful, I think, for the, our constituents. Also, it's exciting tonight. I, I came in the back way. Baseball and track and kids running around, it's like, it's getting closer. I know, I know we're still got to be cautious, but it's getting closer, so that was exciting. And I want to wish our newest RBB member, Baby, Baby Lee in the back, congrats. Looks like things are going well, and congrats on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I too. Miss Jennifer Anderson and all the hard work she's put in, she really has brought our schools a long way, and we appreciate that. And the recognition of Stephanie Knox, again, one of our great teachers and happy to say one of many of our great teachers, because we, we sure do have a wonderful staff here. I also wanted to bring up that the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission will be meeting Wednesday. And as part of that, they're looking at potentially continuing the relationship that they've had with RBB schools and our STEM programs and providing grant assistance for that. So we're looking at a potential, another six years of continued partnership with, with them. And so we, we really appreciate the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission and, and their work that they do and, and including us as, as a part of that. So we want to thank them. As I said, the donations, you know, every, every month, we just always, always have donations to thank people for. And so I, I think that shows that people are invested in what we are doing here. And so that, that feels pretty good to see that. With that, we'll have board signatures, and you all have a wonderful month. This meeting's adjourned.